Greetings Vancouver and to those listening from around the globe. Welcome back to the Vancouver Overcast Podcast where we dive into the heartbeat of our beautiful city and learn more about its leaders. I'm your host, Mike Klassen, and today we have an extraordinary guest with us. For episode 20, I'm delighted to interview councillor Sarah Kirby Young. She's no stranger to the corridors of power, having served during two terms on Vancouver City Council. But beyond the official titles, Sarah is a fierce advocate for a livable, vibrant, and culturally rich Vancouver. We'll be delving into her vision for housing, her commitment to small businesses, her view on the tourism sector in Vancouver, and how she's a champion for creating a more vibrant city. I'll also be asking her to reflect upon how her last term contrasts with the current one, and tell us more about what she loves to do when she has time away from political life. So grab your coffee, find a cozy spot, and join us as we explore the city's pulse with councillor Sarah Kirby Young on Vancouver Overcast. So I'm very pleased to have my colleague Sarah Kirby Young here with me on the Vancouver Overcast Podcast. Let's get right into a conversation here, Sarah. You know, you've been on park board and you've been reelected twice as a councillor. When you first ran for office, what was your original mission?
Oh, we're gonna get right into it.
Yeah.
Well, I have worked in the tourism sector for a long time. So I was the Destination Vancouver Director of Marketing. And I think really through that, I interfaced with a lot of parts of my city and I was really privileged. We were a membership-based organisation. We had about 1,200 member businesses, arts and culture, restaurants, conference organisers, you name it, and I think it really gave me a sense of what it took. It was an ecosystem to deliver for the tourism sector. And so when the opportunity came along to run for park board, it seemed like a natural way to kind of go from, if you will, promoting the city to kind of taking care of the city and having a hand in setting policy.
I'm thinking how much work that you've been doing around the hotels file right now, and you've had that experience of working for a major hotel chain at one point in time. As I think Director of Communications and Marketing?
I did, yeah.
Yeah. And what was your thinking at the time when you saw the number of hotel rooms just not kind of matching demand and potentially losing some of the stock like we did to, because some of those buildings were bought by BC Housing or the city?
Yeah, I was concerned because I think that sometimes when there's a policy gap and an issue, there is an instinct to rush and try and fix it. And I think with the case of the, you're referring to the federal programme, the Rapid Housing Initiative, where during the pandemic, it was, I think, a sort of an emotional response to dealing with some serious issues, the fact that people had to isolate more. There were issues with congregation and social housing. And so the thinking was, let's just buy some hotels. And at first blush, I think that that seemed like a good idea to some folks. I was concerned because I knew we'd been losing hotel stock. And when you started taking it out, and those were, you know, the higher-end hotels, they were some of the more budget and affordable friendly. But we had always had a shortage of hotel rooms in the city of Vancouver. And I think a lot of people think, well, you know, but housing is more important. Why are you talking about hotels? Why aren't we focusing on housing for locals? But they're actually connected. Because if people don't have somewhere to stay, they start looking for other places. So you get into illegal Airbnbs becoming more attractive. There's an economic impact with people not being able to come and stay. So if they don't have a room to stay in the hotel, they're not eating in the restaurant. They're not going to, you know, an arts and culture show. And I think tourism is often the unsung hero. And a lot of people don't realise that, that the GDP contribution provincially is higher than our resource industries. But it's not considered to be necessarily as sophisticated or otherwise. And so you can see, and just like housing, if you don't have enough of it, your hotel rooms become more expensive. So that limits who can visit here, that limits the economic opportunities, and it starts to impact on housing. So a healthy hotel sector needs to run in parallel, in my mind, alongside a healthy housing array of choices for people.
And we've seen recent reports about the cruise ship industry coming back strong here. Probably they're expecting a record year right now in the economic impact. They're calculating in the billions for our city, which is incredible. So I'm not going to let you get away just yet of-
Well, I've got a funny anecdote on the cruise sector. When I worked at Destination Vancouver, we used to have a ship spell in our office. And every time a cruise ship would come into port, you would hear the team down on the meeting side that would actually ring that bell. Because every single ship at the time represented more than a million dollars in economic impact coming into the city. And so that's why you see neighbourhoods like Gastown that were devastated during the pandemic when tourism literally shut down overnight. And tourism was, just like the arts, was one of the first sectors to go and one of the last to come back. So it has a huge impact on our local economy.
So I'm sort of shifting slightly into sort of the political realm here. But you mentioned some of the reasons that you were compelled to run for office. You topped the polls in 2022 on the council slate. Also clearly going with ABC at the time was a good decision. I mean, you know, can you share ultimately why you made that choice to run with the party?
Sure, I mean, I think the history is well-known. It's out there, people can Google what happened. I originally ran with the MPA and was led to council with them. And with myself and some of my colleagues, councillor Bye and councillor Dominado, we didn't feel the party was going in the right direction. And we really tried to try to bring the ship around, so to speak, and put us back on the right track, I think, of building on the history of a really old-storied party. And one, I think, that had really balanced economic benefits with social benefits. And we weren't successful in that. And so we made a tough choice and walked away and set as independents for about a year and a half and worked closely together. And at the time, didn't know what our political future looked like, but felt that that was the right decision and that outweighed any future political considerations about what it looked like. And then I thought long and hard, I didn't know if I was going to run again or not, if I was going to run with ABC or not. And I think there was a compelling position that was brought forward to the electorate, that they could see a team. And I think after the last council, which was a very diverse, very disparate council, people will remember. People wanted to see a team, I think, that could work together and get things done. And for me, that was compelling.
Well, we'll talk a little bit more about some of those sort of political and sort of council experience in previous terms. But anyone can go back a little bit further. I know you were born in England. I don't know that many people know that much about you. But what stands out about your youth over in the UK in your memory?
Oh, well, I moved to Canada when I was about six and a half with a very strong English accent, which people say, well, you've lost it. Although apparently some English people can pick up on it. I remember things in the UK, like my first day of school, where you wear a uniform and you have a satchel and you go to school and they have assembly in the morning. And sort of the traditions that you would expect more in the UK. And going to my nana's house after school on the way home and walking home. And so I think it's those early memories that are imprinted for you. Yeah, I think that's really what stands out.
Did you get to go back very often after that?
Yeah, we went back, been back quite a few times. And there's, it's interesting, you know, in terms of where you're from, when people talk about roots and why that's important. And because when I go back, I all of a sudden, I have a sense of feeling at home. You can make, they know how to make a proper cup of tea. No offence here, but dunking a tea bag into a not boiling hot cup of water is not a way to make a proper cup of tea. But yeah, I think it's part, it forms you, it shaped you. It's part of where you come from and your perspective.
So with that sort of background, from coming from a broad wing very young, and then growing up here in British Columbia, you know, what was it about your upbringing, do you think, that drew you into public life?
You know, it's a great question because I had never considered politics. I didn't belong to the young XYZ political group at university. I went to UBC here in Vancouver. I wasn't particularly politically active, but I did have job opportunities that really connected me to my city and to the people that were kind of making it vibrant. And sort of that, really seeing that, like working with neighbourhoods and working with those groups. And I think it became a natural extension that kind of found me versus me finding it. And I think partly in terms of my upbringing. Yeah, I learned early on to be pretty independent. My dad passed away when I was, I had just turned 17. I was heading, I was in my first year at university at the time. And it's just sort of, I think, that kind of ethos of, you know, you have to sort of find your way, right? And stand on your own two feet probably is what carried me forward.
I want to sort of shift the topic, which I think is probably top of mind for a lot of the public, a lot of the people that we hear from, and it's regarding housing, the cost of housing, the availability of housing. There have been a number of initiatives that council has driven forward with over the last several months around housing that is responding, I think, to some of those needs and concern of the public. There is a motion that you just brought forward regarding co-op housing. And I know that you did a lot of stakeholder work. I saw you working very closely with Tom Armstrong from the Co-op Housing Federation. Tell us a little bit more about that motion and particularly how you think it's going to benefit the public?
Yeah, this one was just last week, so it's very top of mind. It was a real commitment for us during the election, you'll remember, in terms of advancing co-op housing in the city. And I think one of the challenges is more attainable housing, but that security of tenure for people that feel that they can put down roots and stay in the city. And the co-op housing, people talk about the model very fondly. And we've seen occasional projects come forward. But since we saw federal investment dry up decades ago, it has not been built again at scale. And so we had some really great conversations with the secretary. You mentioned the Co-op Housing Federation of BC around how do we determine the model for a viable future for co-op housing here? And when you sit down and you start to look at it, the city of Vancouver owns hundreds of acres of public land. About half of the 7,000 co-ops in the city are on public land and they're quite low density right now. But they are beloved neighbourhoods in terms of the fact that people have lived there for generations and put roots down. And so as our city continues to densify, we saw the opportunity to look at that as a portfolio and say, how can we revitalise those co-op lands to deliver new projects on that land, which is underutilised as those buildings age out over time and they need to be replaced to intensify those and deliver more homes? And also to look at a way that's sustainable. So the Co-op Housing Federation is looking at some really interesting things around collective maintenance and asset management models that can really help there. So you keep the spirit of the co-ops, the individual co-ops got to manage their day-to-day, manage their teneting and build community, potentially have that shared management aspect. And then the city brings the land to the table and the land remains in public ownership. So the city of Vancouver never relinquishes that asset. But there's an opportunity to really lever that up. And so I'm excited about it. I think it's a moment in time because we're also seeing unprecedented alignment between all three levels of government with respects to prioritising housing and some real funding opportunities like BC Builds that's coming forward and the federal government matching the province's investment in that. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to kind of take advantage of this moment and really look at it from a portfolio perspective and bring some projects forward and actually show some demonstrations of how co-op housing really can support the housing crisis. We've done a really great job, I think, in terms of shifting from strata to building rental in Vancouver. That's still tough, but that rental housing still remains pegged to the market. The beauty about co-op housing is it becomes the most affordable housing over time. Because as the mortgages are paid down, the co-ops can afford to manage their housing charges and it actually becomes more cost-effective for residents.
Sticking with housing, it's said that, you know, well, we talk a lot about the downloading from senior levels of government. Housing, even though the federal government tried to say that it wasn't really in that place, it clearly has made this more of a priority, the provincial government through BC Builds initiatives and a lot of discussion around developing housing, working through BC Housing. And the recent legislation that is going to require more density around transit nodes, for example, and multiplex housing. Whereas local government has always, in some ways, kind of struggled with that. And the city of Vancouver is no different. I think we've kind of had some false starts. We've had some interesting initiatives, some of the original STIR programme for rental, the Rental 100. We tried developing a housing office at one point in time. But now we're, seems to me that we're, this is such an important thing that we've in some ways learned from that experience. But it's not just about densifying, it's about trying different sorts of models. How do you think the city could be more successful now than it has been in the past in terms of being directly involved in helping to develop more housing?
Well, I think in many things, the city of Vancouver has had a bit of a philosophy to kind of run in there and try to solve the issue and go it alone. And I don't think that we can. We need to be really good partners. We want to be willing partners, but we can't take it on on our own. So, but we do have a few really important tools at our fingertips. I mentioned the fact that we've got, we own public land in the example of co-op housing. We also hold the policy levers in terms of creating the right conditions to allow housing to come forward. So I mentioned rental housing. We were able in the last couple of years to approve more rental housing than any of the past years because we identified that as a need and developed policies to support it. The other thing I think is the city clearing roadblocks and getting out of the way. So one of the reasons that as a party, we've committed to the 3331 to get projects rezoned faster, DPs faster, permitting faster, because we know that time is money. We've seen an environment of cost and escalation and it continues to make it more and more challenging to deliver those projects. So I think we need to really recognise where we can be most effective as a city and where we should play as a city. And I think it is on, you know, those things that I've described. The other thing is to recognise where the expertise is. And, you know, you talked about the co-op housing and that was really going to the sector and looking at their expertise and working with them. We don't need to be the developer as the city of Vancouver, but we need to create the right conditions and we need to partner and contribute. But we need others there with us.
When I was first elected, I heard continuously, I mean, we heard it on the campaign trail, but once you get it off as everybody wants to talk to you about permitting delays and the time it takes for projects to get shovels in the ground. That need for speed, and I'm revealing a bit of my video game background experience, but the need for speed is something that we keep promising. Can we deliver on it? Are we sort of seeing signs, do you think, from the bureaucratic level of the city to drive things at a quicker pace to respond to demand?
Yeah, I think we can. I think we still have a lot of work to do. And I wouldn't profess to suggest that we're there yet, we're not. We still, we still need to continue to streamline our regulations. And it's really about how do we have a culture of yes? As opposed to, and are, you know, something a critical life safety issue or are there outdated regulations that we should just strip away? But I am starting to hear positive signs. Just last week, I went to the opening for a new restaurant, Maragami Udon. Very famous worldwide, people in the city are crazy about it. It's had lineups outside. It's quickly become one of the top five stores worldwide that they have. And I think they have more than 1,000 of them. And they were talking about how excited they were in Vancouver. And maybe they'd even like to open a second location. And I said, how was your experience? And they said, on permitting. And I waited for the answer. And they said, actually, it was great. And they had some of their consultants there and getting better. And they said, it took about half the time of what they were used to in getting that permit. So is it as quick as we want it to be yet? No, are we getting right on every front? No, but I am seeing signs that we're starting to move the needle.
I'm seeing those signs as well. And our general manager of permitting is going to be retiring in May, but it's a credit to her, her name is Andrea Law, that she's, I think, leaving her department and her organisation with a lot of momentum. I think we're seeing the digital transformation piece that's starting to evolve right now. We're having active conversations about incorporating AI. I am, I'm always an optimist, but I am optimistic about our ability to drive those timelines down. You know, you mentioned a restaurant, but I keep forgetting that a lot of the work that we do is just working again with small business. And our retail sector, I know that you've done a lot of work around hospitality sector, restaurants. It all ties back to that kind of vibrancy piece that I think is so important. I think our whole team feels is really important. Can you reflect a little bit on just, again, working with those communities to try and make their work more successful?
Yeah, I mean, I think about things like last term, your first term on council. So picture this, you're, you know, you're excited, you just get elected, you're about six months in and you have a worldwide pandemic. And you can't get out in the community and meet and see people. But you are hearing from small businesses that are besides themselves and trying to hold on to their lifetime investments. And so restaurants, for example. And so I moved to bring forward the pop-up patio programme. And people were desperate for social connection and the ability to see each other. But we had to deal with safety concerns around and health concerns around the pandemic. And so we brought forth the pop-up patio programme. And all of a sudden, the city was able to pivot on a dime and we were issuing permits in 48 hours. Think about that, 48 hours to get a restaurant permit. And so that's the spirit of what I think we want to hold on to. But these are all small independent businesses, oftentimes individual proprietors who are putting their heart and soul into running these restaurants that become, they make the unique neighbourhoods. You know, if you go to Main Street, it's different than your experience in Gastown. That's different than your experience in Chinatown. And I think Vancouver is a city of neighbourhoods and so we don't want to lose that. That's probably why for me, and again, coming from Destination Vancouver, where I used to talk about how Vancouver is diverse and different. Now we're on the policy side, it's how, policy side, I should say, how do we support that? And so it's really rewarding when you can actually change a policy and you see the immediate impact on somebody. And it created a patio culture, people liked it. And they said, this is great. And why don't we have this all the time? And so I think the silver lining from that is that it shouldn't have taken a pandemic. But perhaps that was one of those shifts that gives us a chance to think differently about how do we be more creative and kind of clear the roadblocks to being a more vibrant city?
A story that just popped into the news in the last few weeks is about a restaurant being fined for people dancing. They called it the Footloose story because people were not allowed to dance. Technically, that was not a municipal responsibility, but everybody thought it was really the city to deal with. What does that story tell you? Just, what does that story tell you about people and their passion around our wonderful sort of culinary establishments?
I think it tells you that people are, will stand up and staunchly defend their small businesses. And if it's their local, in this case, it was Tokador on Main Street. I've been there a few times. They have a fantastic guava spritz, may have enjoyed a few on their patio. That's hot tip recommendation for Happy Hour for anybody out there. But I think people are passionate about those gems in their neighbourhoods. And so when people hear these stories, they're like, don't be threatening my local, you know, if it's my favourite retailer or whatever the case is. And so that, to me, is really, I think, something that is fantastic about Vancouver is how people will rally to support their neighbourhoods and their small businesses. And in that case, yes, you're right, it wasn't us. It was the provincial liquor. And I think there were some challenges with being, you know, on a particular night, being over capacity. But those are sometimes some of the things you have to wade through as a councillor is like trying to find the facts and figure out what is within our ability that we can contribute to fixing and making this better.
Yeah, I don't think we want to entirely wash our hands. I think we have, I mean, we work very closely with provincial regulators, our city staff do. I think that we have a role to play there, just still trying to figure that one out. But it was, again, it was just the public reaction to that story was really brought home for me, at least, that we have a real duty to try and support these businesses and hold their hand through these kind of crazy stories when they happen. You mentioned the last term on council. I think it's fair to say that the previous council in city council in Vancouver got a reputation for its long debates and the countless number of motions and perhaps a lack of cohesion. It was originally celebrated as so many different distinct voices. And when those distinct voices weren't getting along all that well, it probably, it had, the public reacted to it and we saw what happened in the election that followed that. What do you remember, aside from obviously the pandemic being a big factor? What do you remember about that term in council?
That is a great question. And so we did the movie analogy with Footloose, and I don't know if you remember Forrest Gump?
Yep.
Okay, so there's, you know, the scene where Tom Hanks is in the movie and he's sitting on the bench and he's, you know, having the moment, deciding if he's going to go and visit someone he hasn't seen for a long time. He's got a box of chocolates. And he's talking to somebody at the bus stop and he says, you know, life is like a box of chocolates. You never know what you're going to get. That's what it was like on council last term. Because you literally walked into the council chambers and you had no idea if something was going to pass or not. It was a lot of work to try to convince your colleagues of the merits of something. Sometimes council decisions or votes, I would say, were razor-thin, which doesn't send a very strong signal to staff that council is really behind something. Sometimes council would have a change of heart and try to undo a decision. There was endless hours of debate, tons of amendments, which I think ultimately for me watered down the power of a lot of things. Because if you need to take some action and move things forward, I think people were looking for that. And if you ask me, how would I characterise it? I would say perhaps a great concept in theory, but it didn't work. I think you need a team, which is, you know, you asked me earlier about why I ran for ABC. I think you need a team to get things done. And it allows staff to have a very clear direction on what the priorities of the administration are to set a work plan and to move forward. And at the end of the day, we will be judged by what we've accomplished at the end of the four years. But we have the ability to take action and the last council didn't have that.
Box of chocolates, but some of them weren't so sweet, apparently.
Exactly, yeah.
So how would you contrast this term in council? You've been in for just over probably about a year and a half now, almost. And technically in government, if you want to use that term. I know that it still presents its own challenges, but how would you, you know, what's your sort of feeling about now versus the previous term?
I think it's a lot more effective. We had endlessly long meetings from 9:30 in the morning till 10:00 at night on a council week, so Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the entire week. And we never finished the business and it held over to the following week. And the way the council cycle works, for those that aren't familiar, is that theoretically you have council every two weeks. There's a week in between when you can do your reading and your prep and be out in the community and responding to constituents and all those things. And council would literally, it was just like a continuous, you know, where overtime, where we would run and like we would go into the following week and then you would go the, all of the following week and then you would literally be right back into it. And I think that that is an exhausting pace to keep up. It doesn't also give you the ability to have time to sit and reflect. I mean, these are some really important and complex policy pieces that we're looking at and considering, and that requires reading and preparation. I want to get out in community and hear from people, you know, I want to meet with residents, small businesses and hear what they have to say. Because I think that makes for better policy when you hear what's happening on the ground. But it forced us to spend a huge majority of our time just sitting in the council chambers for 12 hours a day.
I want to shift gears and talk about some of the work that I've, that you've, what I would sort of say leaned in on is the work around our historic neighbourhoods, namely Gastown, Granville Entertainment District, and particularly Chinatown. I believe you brought that Chinatown motion earlier on. We're starting to see some changes there, we're hearing from the community. But can you describe what, how that transition is happening and what you're seeing particularly with Chinatown?
Yeah, for me, I think it's really about uplifting our neighbourhoods. I think that the investment in our neighbourhoods was stagnant past councils. They didn't invest in what I would describe as some of the essential services in the city. And they also didn't invest in a lot of upgrading of neighbourhoods and capital projects. And so you've seen in Gastown's case, decline of the streets. The pavers are broken, the cobblestones, it doesn't look loved and looked after. And it's a gem, like we are so fortunate to have a neighbourhood with that type of character. It's the only one that we have in the city. Similarly with Chinatown. That one has really been about honouring, I think, the cultural diversity of individuals who came to our country, literally. If you go and you look at Memorial Square and you see the two statues that are there. And there's one of the railway worker and the soldier together. And that really symbolises people that came over to build the railroad, help, you know, connect British Columbia to the rest of Canada that went to fight in the war and were relegated to Chinatown because they were not allowed through sort of racist zoning and policies to live anywhere else. And they created this unique and thriving neighbourhood that everybody loves. But Chinatown, also, I think you have things like your clan buildings, beautiful historic architecture that needs investment. You saw a lot of racism emerge during the pandemic. We saw crime erupting in that neighbourhood. And so for me, it was really a point of passion that we start reinvesting back into public space, into keeping our neighbourhoods clean, into supporting the small business. And those are the things that people enjoy. And when, when your neighbourhoods start to feel loved and vibrant and people are out there, people love their city. And there's, the power of positivity, I think, cannot be underestimated and that lifts everybody up. It also, I think, respects the fact that each of our neighbourhoods are different. Granville Street is another one. We're looking at investing there and there's also a vision for public space in, on Granville. And not just looking at bringing in more hotels in the area, really respecting the cultural and entertainment heritage and revitalising that and building on that. But looking at building public spaces that are fun and sticky and where people stay and they want to be.
You've put your finger on probably one of the core reasons that I decided to run, which is- which is I really felt that people needed to love their city again. And when you do have that sort of positive viewpoint, the possibilities are endless. And we know that Vancouver has an extraordinary future ahead of it, but it's going to take all of us kind of working positively in the right direction, which is not to say, and, and that includes really addressing some of our biggest challenges. So just kind of ask you about something that I noticed that you get quite a, a strong reaction to a recent business license hearing decision that essentially decided to not go with the staff recommendation to pull a business license of a group that were selling illicit substances. What specifically concerned you about that decision?
Yeah, I, I did. I might have called that decision out on one of our social media platforms. And I, I don't do that, that often. And so I was pretty passionate about it. So for, for people who are listening and aren't familiar, there's a business license hearing. These happen on a rotating basis. They have a panel, three councillors assigned to them at any one time. And typically it's somebody coming forth and arguing their case as to why a business license that is being suspended shouldn't be. And so they decide that they would like to contest that and they get a chance to have their say in front of council. And so in this case, there was a shop that was selling mushrooms and psilocybin's, which are currently not legal in the country, with some individuals who have, well, let's say they've been pretty active in the space. And the rules are pretty clear during a business license hearing. It's not around whether or not you particularly like something or a policy, you want to advance and do advocacy on something. You have to adjudicate based on what the current rules are. And the current rules are that we wouldn't give a business license to a business that is selling illegal product. And so that was quite straightforward. This particular business had contravened the rules, had been reached out a number of times by the staff. And we have great staff, I think, that do their best and we're working with them on improving and streamlining regulations. And I think we need to support them when they're doing it right. And in this case, you had two councillors, councillor Frye and councillor Carr, who decided to basically override the rules and give the business license back. And that to me is irresponsible. It sets up, it's not, it doesn't fulfill what a councillor's duties and responsibilities are. If you want to advocate for something, you can do that in regular council meetings. You can bring motions forward. You can debate things. But when you start overriding the rules, then why should any other business have to, have to follow them? And you got a lot of businesses out there that are getting their business license. They're doing the right thing. They're working hard. And so to me, that was really egregious. And I, I saw that as a, as a, honestly, that they were not fulfilling their responsibilities elected councillors.
So I'm going to ask you about another initiative that you've been identified with, and it's the fact that we are seeking to have a shared e-scooter system in the city of Vancouver. I think it's going to be a lot of fun when it comes here, but it does present some challenges. It's definitely a mode shift. And there are concerns that have been expressed about them. How do you respond to those concerns? And what do you see the potential advantages or challenges are going to be coming from, from us bringing in e-scooters to Vancouver?
So I, I love e-scooters and I think micro mobility makes a lot of sense. It's a green, clean form of transportation. It supports our transit system for first and last mile. It's more affordable for people than having a car or other options. It makes sense on a whole bunch of levels. I think in terms of e-scooters, one of the things that we have to recognize is that they are here. They're not going away. Our staff estimate that the amount of e-scooters on our roads is now between up to potentially 10 or 11% of other devices. It's gone up about 25% in the last year alone. And I've been advocating for e-scooters for about four years now. So I'm happy to see that we're finally moving forward. I think that the, the concerns can be mitigated oftentimes more through a shared e-scooter service than they can through a private one. So people talk about speeds. Well, you can set speed limits on a device that's a shared rented one, but you can't do that on a private one, for example. You can do things with technology like identifying a rider for the first time and saying, okay, this individual probably doesn't have the skillset, so we'll set the speed for their first ride to be lower. You can have educational modules on those scooters. There's a whole, they could, you can have things like sidewalk detection technology. There's a lot of, I think, opportunities to do that. The province is testing it. Vancouver is part of this pilot. And again, it's moving forward. So I think it's, we need to figure out how do we integrate this in a way that is safe and thoughtful into our public space. And so right now Vancouver's got an RFP out, looking for respondents. That process is underway. I'm looking forward to seeing what comes of that. But our staff did a lot of time studying how we wanted to roll this out. One of the things that the RFP requires is that we'll have a docked system. So just like Mobi Bikes, if people are familiar with Mobi. And they have a docked system so that the scooters can't be necessarily left everywhere, but they're, you know, we're thoughtful in the public space and that, we know, learning from other cities where they had some learning pains with those. But that ours will operate just like Mobi, where they would have dedicated stations. They'd be docked. You pick it up with your helmet and off you go.
Do we have a rough timeline when we might see these out on the streets?
Yeah, the hope is that we'll actually have the first units out for the summer.
Great.
The RFP has closed, so I'm waiting probably eagerly, just like you, to see who staff are going to recommend that that operator will be.
Okay. Well, the, the job of, of being a city councillor, as I've learned, is spending a lot of time out in community and, and meeting with lots and lots of different groups. And so people are always commenting that they see me everywhere and, you know, how do you keep up the pace? And I, I just tell them my, first of all, it's some of the most gratifying part of the work is to be able to engage with so many different groups. But, you know, people probably say the same thing to you. We see you everywhere. How do you, how do you kind of prioritize all of that work and, and the groups that you're seeing?
Yeah, I think, well, first of all, I think you have to love doing it. So if you, you know, if you don't, if you, if you don't get jazzed by being out in the community and going to the events, this is probably not the job for you. Because I think to do it well, you do need to be out there and connecting with people. I think for me, it's really about, I think it's really about thinking carefully about how you spend your time. And I will really prioritize specific communities that I want to be part of and see and show up for. And I mentioned, for example, Chinatown was somewhere I spent a lot of time previously because I love the neighborhood, but they also needed a lot of help and a lot of support. And I also think it's important to be there for community groups over time and that they feel that they have ongoing relationships with your councillors and they want to be there. I think the beauty for us about having a team, you're right, because there's a lot of city to cover and there's a lot of events, is that we do have the ability as a team to fan out there. But we often, and you know this, will show up at events together too. And I think that's important for the community to see us there. But I just really love the opportunity to be there. And I will look at things. And if it's something I haven't been to, I'll say like, yeah, I'm going to prioritize that in my calendar because it's a group I haven't had a chance to build a relationship with yet.
Cool. So I want to talk about the, the park board issue in the sense that you are part of a transition working group that has been established by the mayor. You know, when you're out in the public, what are you hearing about what it comes to parks and recreation in Vancouver? What are the, what are the gaps and what are the things that the public are telling you about what they'd like to see with that system?
Well, what I hear overwhelmingly, and sometimes even when I'm out at Dimson, people will come up and chat to me about it, which I love in a sense. Sometimes, you know, you want a little bit of downtime, but I love the fact that people are so passionate about this. And what I hear overwhelmingly from the majority of the public is that they think it makes sense to not have an elected park board anymore. I think that there's some folks that, you know, there, there's a legacy and a history. And I think we can honor and appreciate the fact that the park boards started for a great reason back in the day to protect Stanley Park. But our city has evolved and it's become a lot more complex. We now have 240 parks, but we also have complex issues that overlap different jurisdiction. And what I hear from people is the most is simplification. So if I'm an event organizer, why do I have to go to get a permit? So let's say I'm the Celebration of Light. They have to get a permit from the city of Vancouver because they're using city streets and they have to go through a permit for the park board and go through two different separate processes. So it's time and cost of money and complexity. I hear that a lot. Things like seawall maintenance. We have different crews that are maintaining different parts of it, simply because it falls under part is city jurisdiction, part is the park board jurisdiction. Mobi Bikes, we talked about that earlier, has been waiting a couple of years to get a station cited at a local community center. So there seems to have been some delays with respects to that. And I remember when I was on the park board and Mobi was starting up, they had to go through two different processes again for contracting. So they imagined what that would take in terms of two sets of legal agreements, different sets of timing. And so people could, they could cite a bike share or people could ride the bike to a park, but they couldn't dock it in the park. So if you wanted to go and say you wanted to ride a bike share into Stanley Park, well, then you would have nowhere to leave it. Because the park board said, oh, we're not ready yet. We don't want to do it. It's fine. The city has done it. And so I think when you, you know, start to think about a lot of real life examples like that, you realize that there's, I think, a lot of opportunity for making it simpler and easier for a lot of those folks that are trying to have fun or deliver services in and around the city and the parks.
And I think I've heard you say, as a former park board commissioner yourself, that loss of green space is, is a kind of a non-starter for you.
Oh yeah, that's a no-go for me 100%. And I, I wouldn't have supported this move if we hadn't had full and complete protection of our current parks. And in fact, what we need to do is try to figure out ways to increase the green space that we have in the city. And so that was a really important part of the motion that was brought forward around putting strong protections in to ensure that loss of space. And I actually brought an amendment to the motion as well that looked for some of those parks that don't have permanent status, to get that information back and look at how we can expedite moving that forward. People don't realize that there is actually really no change for temporary parks right now. The city could make changes there today if we wanted to, whether we had a park board or not. And we put a stronger threshold in for protecting permanent parks with this proposal moving forward.
What do you do when you're not being a city councillor that brings you some satisfaction and quality of life?
You know, I think one of the things that I love to do, and I'm starting to do it again now, was pre-pandemic was travel. Because I think it's good to get out of your own space and your own city. And when you have a chance to do that, you, it clears your mind, you get exposed to other cultures, you get a chance to see how other cities are doing things. And I find that really reinvigorating and energizing. Used to love to travel. I was at a point where I was sort of had a goal and was kind of meeting it of seeing at least two new countries every year. And would pick up and go and managed to sandwich my trips in between council sessions. But yeah, some of the last trips that I did right before the pandemic, I went to, went to Africa. We had a great trip in Tanzania on safari. We were in India. Yeah, Morocco, all sorts of fun and interesting places. And so I've got a little bit of travel starting to come back up. But that for me, I think is a chance to get out of your own fishbowl and look at how others are doing it. And it's just nice to get away and get a change of scene. So that for me is a big part of it. And it always makes me appreciate Vancouver more because when you are looking out of that airplane window and you're coming back into YVR and you look at how green it is and you can see the water and you see the mountains and you land and you smell the Vancouver air, it makes you really appreciate the fact that we get to live here.
Makes me ask, what is it that you like the best about living in the city of Vancouver?
I think that's a big part of it. I think it's, I think it's being side by side with nature. I think it's the fact that even going about your day when you're going to work and you and I are heading into council chambers for some of those long meetings, you smell the air and you see some of the forest or you can, you can get places really fast where you can feel that. So you can go for a walk through the UBC Endowment Lands. You can walk on the seawall. You can go in your local park. And I think that's pretty magical that we have that here.
I agree. Sarah, thanks very much. Thanks for coming onto the podcast and telling a little bit about yourself and your perspective on the work that you're doing right now. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
And thank you listeners for tuning into the Vancouver Overcast Podcast. In future episodes, I'll feature some news and insights on the work that we're doing at City Hall, as well as introducing you to some of the dynamic leaders of our city. Be sure to follow, subscribe and share at @OvercastYVR on Instagram, Facebook, X, formerly known as Twitter, and our LinkedIn channel. Visit overcastyvr.ca for all previous episodes, also available on Apple Podcasts and Spotify. From the beautiful city of Vancouver, I'm your host, councillor Mike Clasen. Cheers.